Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties, Morristown Area, and Mountain Lakes, and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation, I am pleased to welcome you to our virtual debate for the Morris County Commissioners. My name is Fadia Hindy, and I am a member of the Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Empowering voters, defending democracy, is our message. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League. We are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in our electoral process. We envision a democracy where everyone has the right, the knowledge, the confidence, and the opportunity to participate. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the League name or footage from this debate in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. If you would like to participate in any of our efforts, the League actively seeks diversity in our membership. Membership in the League is open to people 16 years and older of all gender identities. With 100 years of experience, the League is one of America's oldest and most trusted civic nonprofit organizations. Partnering with the League in presenting this debate, we welcome the Morris County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation and Megan Hunter, President and CEO of the Morris County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation. We thank them for working with us. We are grateful for their nonpartisan participation and support and look forward to our continued work together. I would now like to introduce Megan.
Thank you, Fadia, and good evening, everyone. I'm Megan Hunter, President and CEO of the Morris County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation. As co-host, the Chamber welcomes you to this evening's debate. At the Chamber, we connect businesses with each other and to the resources that they need to succeed. I would like to thank the candidates for their participation this evening, the League of Women Voters, and Michael Stanzilis, in particular, the Vice President of Membership and Government Affairs for the Chamber, for his efforts on the part of the Chamber to organize this debate. Morris County is truly a special place. As one of the wealthiest counties in the country, Morris County boasts a $60 billion gross regional product with a diversity of industries. They include aerospace and defense, life science and pharmaceuticals, financial services, healthcare, and, yes, manufacturing. Morris County is home to four colleges and universities, 28,000 businesses, and 800 headquarters which are located here. With the most preserved open space in the state, walkable communities, award-winning schools, unique stores and restaurants, and an airport with customs, Morris County is truly an ideal place to live, work, and visit. I invite you to learn more by viewing the relocation guide on the Chamber or MCEDC website. Again, thank you for being with us this evening. Thank you to the candidates, and thank you to the League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Megan. We encourage everyone to go to vote411.org, which provides a one-stop site for information on all aspects of voting in New Jersey, as well as information about all candidates up and down the ballot. We want to remind you that there are three ways. First, vote by mail ballot. If you have already received or applied for a vote-by-mail ballot, you can cast that ballot in one of three ways: via regular mail, which must be postmarked honorable before 8:00 p.m. on November 2nd, and it must be received by the county's Board of Elections honorable before November 8th. In a secure ballot drop box, you can just place it in one of the county's secure ballot drop boxes by 8:00 p.m. on November 2nd. And third, at the Board of Elections office, you may deliver it in person to your county's Board of Elections office by 8:00 p.m. on November 2nd. Second way that you can vote is in-person early voting. This new option enables all registered voters to cast their ballots in person using a voting machine. Early voting has begun and goes through Sunday, October 31st. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can find locations for early voting at vote nj.gov. And finally, of course, at your polling place on Election Day. Vote in person at your polling place from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, November 2nd. All forums and debates conducted by the New Jersey League can be viewed on the New Jersey League's website, l w v nj.org, and on vote411.org. This debate is being livestreamed on the Morristown Area League of Women Voters YouTube channel, and will be available there for viewing afterwards. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Susan Ferris. Per League practice, Susan is a League-trained moderator who is not from this voting district. Susan will now introduce the candidates and outline the format for the evening.
Thank you, Fadia. Welcome, everyone. Tonight's program will give the voters in Morris County an opportunity to hear from candidates running for three county commissioner seats. There was another candidate. There's actually two candidates missing from our program tonight. One, at the last minute, was unavoidably detained and couldn't attend. I will be reading her opening statement, Deana McCulca, and just as soon as I go over the rules. Another candidate was contacted to participate. His name is, the name is Ederly Vaughn from the Working Families Party, but did not respond to the invitation. These candidates that are running tonight, that are appearing tonight, are Deborah Smith, Republican, John Crickus, Republican, Stephen Shaw, Republican, Thomas TC McCourt, Democrat, and Aaron AJ Oliver, Democrat. And as I mentioned, I will read Deana McCulca's opening statement. She's the other Democrat running. The program will proceed as follows. Each candidate will be given an opening statement for two minutes in a random order that we decided prior to the program starting. Our timekeeper will hold up a yellow 30-second warning for the candidates to let them know they have 30 seconds left of that two minutes. And when the time is up, she will hold up a red card that says "Stop." I will allow the candidates to finish their sentence and then move on to the next candidate. After all of the candidates have given their opening statements, I will be posing questions to the candidates that were sent in by you, the public. Each candidate, if they so choose, can have up to one minute to respond to these questions. I will call on the candidates and vary the order for each question. After each question, candidates will also be given an opportunity to raise their hand to indicate that they would like to rebut the question. Each rebuttal is limited to 30 seconds, and each candidate only has one rebuttal per question. The timekeeper will indicate when the 30 seconds is up by holding up the stop signal. At the end of the Q and A portion, each candidate, again, will be given two minutes to give a closing statement in a predetermined order, which, again, was determined randomly. Okay, I would ask all the candidates to unmute. I'm going to read Ms. McCulca's statement. And we will begin. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Deana McCulca. Everyone sitting on this call and streaming at home knows this election is bigger than all of us. I put myself through school at night as a state parole officer. While working as a deputy attorney general here in New Jersey, I focused solely on ensuring children and families across the state were protected. That experience, coupled with over a decade of being a family law attorney, made serving on the Mine Hill Board of Education as the sole Democrat a natural next step for me. It's never been about party affiliation or political motivation. Standing by the sidelines while seven talented instructors were terminated from the County College of Morris does not build a stronger Morris. Taking no real action to modernize and monetize our one-of-a-kind solar program while climate change threatens constituents' day-to-day lives does not build a stronger Morris. And doing nothing to attract new industries to stimulate our local economy and create new jobs absolutely does not build a stronger Morris. I got into this work for one reason: to leave my home cleaner than I found it. It's been nearly five decades since anything on the county level has changed. Morris County has rapidly evolved since then, and that is something we, as leaders, should embrace with open arms. Leadership on the ballot this year is long overdue. Leadership is on the ballot this year. It's long overdue that Morris County elects leaders who are proud to do just that lead. Okay, the next opening statement will be from Mr. Shaw.
Yes, thank you, Susan. And thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber for hosting this virtual Candidates Night. I also want to thank my running mates, Deb Smith and John Crickus, as well as two of our opponents for participating tonight. My name's Stephen Shaw, and I currently serve as the Director of the Morris County Board of Commissioners. My journey to public service on the Commissioner Board is one that started back in 1967, when my family moved to Morris County. As my dad would say, "Living in this area is like being on vacation 365 days a year." And I can say with certainty, having lived in Morris County for the past 54 years and raising my two children here with my wife Cindy, he was right. And that's why I serve today. I want to keep giving back to the community that has been so good to me, my family, and my small business. It was in my hometown of Mountain Lakes that I embraced the call of the volunteer. I served as a leader in my church and trade association, then several committees in Mountain Lakes, including Lakes Management, Planning Board, Town Council, Mayor, and was named the Mountain Lakes Police Department Citizen of the Year. I was Vice Chair of the County Open Space Committee when we made the largest open space acquisition to date, to draw the farms in Chatham Township. As your county commissioner, I chair the Capital Budget Committee, sit on the County Planning Board, and am liaison to Public Works in the Office of Planning and Preservation. I also chair the COVID-19 Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. That was established at the outset of the pandemic and was highlighted by both Moody's and S&amp;P for awarding the highest AAA bond rating to the county. Professionally, I'm a second-generation home builder, remodeler, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT. It is truly an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Morris County. I'm passionate about this county, and I want to look forward to listening to all of you and sharing our vision to keep Morris County the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening statement will be from Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. It's great to be with all of you here tonight. I first want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this event, for my running mate, who's President TC McCourt, and also the current commissioners that are here tonight as well. I also want to thank you who are watching and participating. You know, we all have a role to play in supporting our democracy, and we can all be thankful for the freedoms that we have in this country, which must be protected. You know, I was born in Morris County, in Morristown. As a matter of fact, our county seat just down the road from our county administration building, which is where I live now. And I've lived here for a total of 27 years. I came back to Morris County after serving five years on active duty with the U.S. Army because I wanted to serve here and help move Morris County forward to a stronger and brighter future with a perspective of having served God and country in places near and far. You know, I currently serve as the Democratic Chair of Morristown. I serve on the Morristown Environmental Commission and Shetree Commission. And I've established myself as a leader who invests in the people and places in my town and who has helped cast a vision for what Morris County can be in the future if we all work together. I'm not afraid to work with those I disagree with or those across the aisle. I was always taught as a pastor and as a combat veteran, as a community leader, that we must be proactive and not reactive and facing the issues that affect us and the issues that residents care about. But we have urgent and complex needs that must be addressed from climate change, protecting our environment, supporting our great educational institutions, and having bold economic ideas. We must also look out for the vulnerable and marginalized and bring these issues into the public forum. As much as we talk about working together, this election is about contrast as well. It's about values. It's about leadership. You know, and tonight, you'll hear from each of us over what we stand for and who you want to advocate for Morris County and our values of responsibility, inclusion, and hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Smith is next to give her opening statement.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, all. I'm Deborah Smith. I'm the Deputy Director of the Morris County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to thank the Morris County Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for co-hosting this event. By way of background, I met my husband, Stephen, a small business owner, and moved to Morris County in 1987. In 1991, we moved to Denville, where I had the pleasure of first serving on the Denville Zoning Board, and then as a member of the Denville Township Council and as Council President. While on the council, I served on the Planning Board, the Board of Adjustment, liaison to the Denville Fire Department, the Library, the Historical Society, Denville Seniors, to name a few. I have a Bachelor's Degree in Mathematics, a Master's in Counseling. I have a Certified Financial Planner from Adelphi University and completed the Certificate of Municipal Government Program from Rutgers. My past careers were in market and media research, financial markets as a stockbroker and commodities broker, advertising director for New Jersey Rehabilitation Magazine, and finally, 25 years with Dun &amp; Bradstreet and Parsippany as a key accounts manager before retiring in November 2014. I joined the then-known-as Freeholder Board in January 2016. My areas of focus on the Board has been serving as the Chair of the Budget Committee, Chair of the Insurance Commission, Liaison to County Administration and Finance, as well as County College of Morris and Morris County School of Technology. Last year, I was the Director of the Board, and this year is Deputy Director. Along with Commissioners Shaw and Crickus, we have the honor to serve all of Morris County residents and businesses. We have demonstrated the proven success in Morris County, leading us through the pandemic, investing in what matters most, and delivering affordability and prosperity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Crickus.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce for cosponsoring tonight's debate. And thanks to all of the candidates participating. And I want to especially thank everyone who's taking the time to watch tonight. It is an honor to serve as a county commissioner along with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shaw. And we are proud of our accomplishments, especially in leading Morris County through the pandemic and now the recovery. And we look forward to discussing our accomplishments tonight. But I want to start with three key future goals. First, we will not increase county property taxes in 2022, meaning no increase in taxes for three years in a row, a stark contrast with Essex Union and Passaic, where county property taxes are 76% higher. Second, as announced in August, we are excited to expand the Morris County School of Technology, also known as VOTEC, by 500 students with a new building at the CCM campus and a target completion date of 2024. We committed an additional $14 million in the capital and operating expenses, and the expansion will provide education for careers in healthcare, manufacturing, logistics, and technology. Third, building on Morris County's leadership in open space, parks, and our recent successful Trails program, we will pursue a new stewardship program to maintain and enhance this preserved land in the most environmentally sensitive manner possible. A little bit about my background. My wife, Carol, and I are from Madison. I received a BA from Drew and a Master's from LII. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I've worked in finance and data analytics. Carol and I moved to Long Valley, where we raised our two daughters, all three of whom are volunteer EMTs. I served on the Washington Township Committee and was mayor for three years. I asked for your support for reelection along with Deb Smith and Stephen Shaw to the County Board of Commissioners, formerly known as Freeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, the opening statement from Mr. McCourt.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this crucial debate. This position manages over $300 million of our tax dollars. So it is vital that as many voters as possible get a chance to kick the tires and see who they like and who they want to vote for, even if there's only one week to go before Election Day. I grew up in a family full of public servants that taught me the value of giving back to my community. It's why I've been an advocate for youth empowerment since high school, why I took my first job in state government, why I serve on my town's planning board and on the Morris County Heritage Commission, and it's why I'm running for county commissioner. Morris County is changing, and our government is failing to change with it. We are rapidly diversifying, something I fear our current commissioners see as a problem. 50 years of total Republican control has left our county government stagnant and, I believe, unable to best address the issues that we'll face in the years ahead. We'll hear tonight, probably many times, that everything's fine. We don't need to make a change. But the blunt truth is that, as far as our county government is concerned, Morris County deserves better. Morris County is a great place to live, to work, to raise a family. But the idea that we can't be better, the idea that we can't be stronger, is an abdication of leadership. We can be both of those things and more if we work together. With me, you'll get someone who's not afraid to listen to those I disagree with, not afraid to hear from people that share different viewpoints, not afraid to admit when I'm wrong. This is a campaign focused on the future, not the past, focused on where we're going, not where we've been. A campaign focused on people, not politics. Tonight, I hope to share with you a vision of optimism, of hope, a path towards a stronger Morris. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into the question portion, question and answer portion of the program. And I will be rotating the order of who will be answering the questions. You, again, have one minute to respond to each question, if you so choose. The first question. So many residents are moving out of New Jersey because of high taxes. What is your plan to keep quality services and control the county taxes imposed upon us? And I'm going to start with Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Susan. Many people don't realize that the county tax portion is the smallest portion, along with your municipal taxes, of your tax bill. It is really, the largest portion is among the schools, which we have little control over. What we have done on the Commissioner Board is we've maintained a flat tax, and as Mr. Crickus mentioned earlier, our promise to not raise taxes next year. You get a lot of bang for your buck with the money that you give to the county to provide a place that provides you with a place to live, work, play, and raise a family with over 20,000 acres of open space and the communities and businesses that we have. So we plan on keeping taxes flat while maintaining and even increasing services. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McCourt?
It's very easy for the commissioners to say that they're not going to raise taxes in 2022, when municipalities are doing it for them. When the amount of taxes taken in by the municipality goes up, the county's share of that pot gets bigger, and therefore, they don't have to raise the county taxes. It's actually financially irresponsible for anybody running for office to say that they are not going to raise taxes in 2022 after not raising taxes in 2021. The only solution to that problem, which would be possibly a shortfall in revenue, is to cut services or simply accounting gimmicks. We know that the $95 million that Morris County is going to receive cannot be used to offset tax increases. The fact is that Morris County has $30 million more in tax revenue this year than we did in 2015. That is off the back of the municipalities. It's irresponsible for Morris County commissioners to sit here tonight and say that they're not going to raise taxes when we don't know the clear budget picture that we're going to be facing in 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Crickus?
So I'm a member of the Budget Committee, and I also am a CPA in the state of New Jersey, retired. I changed career, so I used to be in finance. We have a track record of accomplishing both not increasing taxes, this will be the third year in a row, and providing the services. And what we do is, a great example of this is with Sheriff Gannon, and working with Sheriff Gannon. He reduced overtime in the county jail. And what he then did was invested the savings in really a breakthrough program, Hope One and Navigating Hope. These are programs that we've actually, Sheriff has brought to Newark, to Atlantic City. It's become a national model. So a great example of where we've held taxes at zero, but we've used the ability to create savings to create improved services that really matter, you know, as we're in this opioid crisis, which was made worse by the pandemic. So we use that philosophy of trying to find ways to do things better and more efficiently, and then we can reinvest the savings, both in no-tax increases and better services.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Oliver?
So affordability is certainly a concern in our towns and countywide as well. And we're seeing that in an increasing level as well. Morris County values are about being physically responsible, but also being about socially inclusive. It's important that we keep our tax burden low. It's important that we increase shared services as well. You know, we're seeing a model, for example, from Somerset County for a shared service marketplace. So we think that we can build on what's been done in that regard and expand that for all of our towns and for the future of our county residents with this concern as well.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, thank you. So my running mates pretty accurately demonstrated that we can make that pledge and responsibly hold the line on taxes and not reduce services. We do think outside the box. As a matter of fact, I'll mention our sheriff again. We share services. We actually take inmates from the Sussex County Correctional Facility, and we bring them over here to Morris County. And that's actually a business model in addition to being a public policy model that's turning revenue for the county. We have shared services with our Juvenile Detention Center as well. Where several counties send the juvenile detention inmates over there. Additionally, our 911 call center, that's a tremendous shared service. And we've invested just about $30 million in upgrading that, doubling the capacity, so more and more municipalities can jump on that. So it can be done, and we're doing it.
Thank you. I see, Mr. Crickus, you have a 30-second rebuttal? Is the timekeeper ready? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Crickus.
Thank you. And I want to follow up on what Stephen just said. We're actually putting out for the communication center a $26 million multi-year capital investment in the dispatch center, in our communication center. Now, I used to be mayor of Washington Township, and every six, seven, eight years, you know, technology changes, and we would have to spend a large amount of money to replace the systems. And other towns were doing the same. We now have 23 towns on our communication center, and all those towns are saving that extra investment. So we definitely have shared services.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, does anybody else? Okay, Mr. McCourt?
Yeah, I just want to take issue with the portrayal of the county communication system as a shared service. No, that's the county taking over a service from the municipalities. What we're talking about with shared services is the municipalities working together with each other, not passing off responsibilities to the county. It could be said that the county doesn't want to see more shared services because if the municipalities reduce their expenses, then that's less taxes they have to raise and less money that the county gets.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have a 30-second rebuttal before I go to the next question? I don't... Mr. Shaw?
Well, I was just going to point out, you know, the county does increase the services to municipalities. We're not expecting municipalities to take everything on their shoulders, and the ambulance service is one example of that. We have five county ambulances that roam the county. It's split up into five districts. So they're there to fill in when our volunteers can't and even when the paid services can't. And that's been a tremendous help to our municipalities, and obviously, it's saving lives. That's important.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, if you could lower your hand, Mr. Shaw, and we'll go on to the next question. The next question is, what priorities would you like to see in the next budget for Morris County? And how will you minimize impact on tax? And how will you minimize impact on taxpayers? It's kind of another related question. So we will start with Mr. McCourt.
It does not require raising taxes to change our budgetary priorities. If Morris County instituted true zero-based budgeting and required every department head to come before them and make the case for either their increase or their sustained amount from the previous year, then we would truly be able to find out what departments need and what they don't. It is irresponsible of our county commissioners to accuse us of being radical for wanting to fund more in human services. Human services spending has seen a twenty percent increase since 2015, which is the first year that Mr. Crickus served on the board. In that same time, the Office of Emergency Management has seen a fifty-six percent increase in spending. We lost twenty-seven million dollars in spending on Morris View. Where did that money go? It did not go back into human services. It likely went into OEM and related departments. We've been accused of wanting to defund the police.
Thank you.
We want to reprioritize our budget.
Thank you, Mr. McCourt. Your time is up. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, first of all, I would say that one of our biggest priorities, and I'm chair of the operating budget and Commissioner Shaw is chair of the capital budget, and we have a committee of three people on each of those, on each of those budget committees. Our priorities this year, besides maintaining services and enhancing services, is really to help Morris County residents and businesses to get back on their feet to deal with the pandemic. That is really the key that we're looking at. And, you know, yes, there is money from the American Recovery Act, but we have to look at all of it together. I just want to mention something on Morris View and the decision on Morris View. It didn't mean that we gained money. We were losing money on Morris View, projected to be over a twenty million dollar burden on our taxpayers, and that was why we made the decision to lease it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crickus?
Yes, thank you.
Budgetary priorities?
Yes, and as a member of the Budget Committee and having had local experience working on budgets and having worked in finance, we do look at every budget from top to bottom. And we do analysis of looking at the growth rates from the various departments, and you obviously focus on areas where there are increases versus the norm. When we talk about our priorities, priorities, I touched on some of those earlier. Education is key. We need to have the skills in our workforce. Companies are looking for people with skills. And this is going to help our residents too. So it's a win-win all around. So one of our focuses has been, we had an increase in aid to County College of Morris. We've actually had two of those in the past few years. This county college has suffered a decline in students. And we're also have made a major commitment, as I mentioned earlier, to Morris Vo-Tech because we can handle those extra five hundred students and provide them for, provide them skills for the future. And I'm sure later on, I might have a chance to also talk about our stewardship program that will help all of our open space and preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a lot of other questions on the topics you're talking about, so I hope we can get to them. Okay. The next answer, does Mr. Oliver have anything to say to the budgetary priority question?
Yes, no, I think it's about our priorities as a county, as you know, has been said. And I think, you know, one of the good things about getting, you know, new commissioners on the board is that we have a fresh set of eyes that can look at these issues. You know, you can remain stagnant if you have only one-party rule for, you know, for many decades. Fortunately, we are, we are one of the wealthiest, you know, counties in the country, but it's not, it's important not to forget about the vulnerable and the marginalized as well. You know, part of our campaign is about, you know, drawing attention to them as well. You know, issues of food insecurity is only on the rise. You know, we have a homeless population, so it's important that we, you know, support them, and we have a full-spectrum approach to our budgetary operations.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shaw, do you have anything to add before we go to rebuttal?
Yes, yeah, I just want to say, everybody's right. Our priorities are in our budget, and law and public safety and the Office of Emergency Management are right up there. And that was clearly evident that we were investing wisely when we were investing in those areas when the pandemic hit. Those were the two offices that were at the front lines of fighting this pandemic. The Vaccine Center, that was law and public safety, offices of emergency management. Getting the masks, so all the residents need them. That was the Office of Emergency Management. Our entire pandemic response was orchestrated through our Office of Emergency Management. And the state of New Jersey noticed how our Office of Emergency Management was handling the pandemic, and they used our Office of Emergency Management as a template for other towns and counties to follow. I'm very proud of that. That's not to say we still invest thirty-eight point six million in educational, cultural, and economic initiatives, twenty-three million in human-based community initiatives, and eighteen, nineteen million in CCM. I'm proud of our budget.
Thank you. Okay, we have two rebuttals so far. Mr. McCourt, you were first.
The Office of Emergency Management burned a hundred thousand masks when Morris County residents needed them. Those aren't priorities that I think we should be following. We haven't increased our appropriation to CCM since two thousand, since twenty fifteen. That's not a priority I want to continue. We haven't increased our appropriation to VOTech since two thousand and six. That is not a priority that I'm going to continue.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk Crickus?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to mention, and Stephen Shaw touched on it, how during the pandemic, using both Office of Emergency Management and our Department of Social Services, we targeted helping those in need. Before we knew we were going to get any state aid, we provided additional aid to our food banks. We called them, anticipating the need. We had to handle homeless people and getting extra space so that there was more space for them during the pandemic. And, and I see my time's up. Thank you.
Yeah, it's the thirty seconds goes really fast. Okay, if you could both lower your hands. Mr. Shaw, did you want to add something for thirty seconds?
I just wanted to clarify on the, on the masks, the county received a hundred thousand masks that were labeled N95, and they were not contacted the state immediately, and they told us to destroy the masks. They could not be circulated. You couldn't start taking markers on a hundred thousand masks and crossing out N95. It would have been irresponsible. So that's what happened to those masks.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that in our budgets, we have increased both operating and capital to both CCM and VOTech. Both of our, you know, CCM is like a number-one school in the, in the state, and we're very proud of that. So just to clarify, we have been raising our allocations to them.
Okay, thank you. Going to move on to the next question, and that is, since COVID, we have seen some of our favorite shops and restaurants close down. What has been done and can be done going forward to help these small businesses survive and recover? And this time, I'm going to start with Mr. Shaw.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it was absolutely awful to see all of these businesses shut down by state order. Quite frankly, all of the shutdowns, you know, didn't make sense. So we initially, you know, got into a action plan, and we had a recovery task force to look at what was being done and how we could help. So we helped businesses, for instance, restaurants. We actually dedicated some county park space that they could open outside areas. So, and now that we have the ARPA funds, that's the American Rescue Plan funds, we're going to be able to offer a small-business grant program to those businesses that were so heavily impacted. And of course, the chamber has been working with our businesses as well in helping them navigate this pandemic and getting reopened. But, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Oliver?
COVID is, as, you know, sad and tragic a time it's been, has created some, some opportunities that should extend beyond, you know, the period that we're in as well. You know, I've seen some great public and private partnerships. For example, in Morristown with the Adopt a Business Program. And also, you know, I've seen different organizations look for state grants. For example, the Sustain and Serve Program with the State Department of Economic Development. So I think that, you know, we can, we can do these things even more at the county level and continue to advertise the success of these great programs and show how much we support our small businesses and all residents.
Thank you. And Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, you know, originally, there was CARES money that was allocated to the counties, and because our population was under five hundred thousand, we didn't get what our neighboring counties got. I think the latest census is going to show we're over five hundred. But we do have the ARPA funds. And one of the things is, we need to utilize that to help the, my associates talked about the fact that we have grants for small businesses. We recently gave six hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA funds to the arts, to Mayo Performing, so that they could use it for the education. You have to be very careful what you use it for. It has to pass the smell test. Otherwise, the federal government is going to ask for the money back, and we would have to burden the taxpayers. So we are doing everything we can, and I'm proud of what we've been doing and continue to do, and always looking for more ways to help our businesses and our nonprofits.
Thank you. Mr. McCourt?
I want to commend the county commissioners for the small-business grants. You know, this is one area where the county commissioners should lead. The municipalities were burdened more than anybody as far as governments are concerned in this pandemic. And businesses, through no fault of their own, in order to keep them safe and their patrons safe, had to close down. And governments should be willing to step in with funds to make sure that they are able to get back on their feet. I would just argue that this ninety-five million dollars that we're going to receive from the federal government when all is said and done, that that spending be as transparent as possible. Public hearings should be held involving the community, involving businesses, involving all the stakeholders to make sure that we all know where every single penny of that money is going to go, not find out after it's already gone there.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Crickus, do you have anything to add to the conversation about COVID and businesses and recovery?
Yes, thank you. So as Commissioner Smith mentioned, we were under the five hundred thousand limit, so we didn't receive funding initially in COVID. But what we did do is we directed businesses in the chamber assisted to the state grant program. I believe around sixteen, seventeen million dollars of small-business grants were given to businesses in Morris County. Now, what we're doing going forward is director, again, Deputy Director Smith mentioned the funding that we provided, IMPACT. We also provided a hundred thousand dollars to the Morristown Festival so that fees would not go up for the tents. We also provided a grant to the Art and Atrium so that the largest African-American art show could continue virtually. And we're about to launch, again, having to follow all the federal rules, a small-business grant program, about fifteen thousand dollars for recovery from COVID per federal rules from expenses from March on, and we should be announcing that in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no hands for rebuttal, seems like we can move on to the next question. And that question is, what is your vision for providing and protecting our open space? And we're going to start with Mr. Oliver.
Our open space is a vital resource. I mean, just like, you know, the rest of our environment. And I've seen that, you know, since I've been on the Morristown Environmental Commission, the Morristown Shade Tree Commission the past year. You know, I think, you know, it's important that we have, you know, a county master plan for protecting open space, and I think there are also additional ways that we can help the environment, right? Because this isn't just about money, but it's, it's about people. You know, we're seeing the effects of climate change more and more, and there's so much more that we can be doing for renewable energy and protecting our environment. It's going to take, you know, a regional approach and, you know, seeing what the municipal commissions have done as well. But this, I can't think of a more important issue than protecting our environment.
Thank you. Mr. Crickus?
Thank you. Yes, so as a local official, as a committee man and mayor of Washington Township, this was a passion, preserving our open space and farmland. One of my first acts upon being elected township committee was we preserved the eight-hundred-acre Scott Farm, which is pretty much the valley from the middle school and Long Valley out to the Caliphon border as part of four thousand acres of preservation. So we've done a great deal. We've preserved actually twenty-six thousand acres in Morris County. Now, we're looking to enhance people's ability to enjoy those acres. So several years ago, I sponsored a referendum that the voters overwhelmingly approved for a trail program. And we see trails going in in Hanover and a number of other towns taking advantage of that. And that's why we're also looking at our new stewardship program. Now that we have this large amount of preserved acres, how do we continue to enhance them to have like native plants for, for, you know, for preservation and for that land to be used in its best way? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, well, this is a passion of mine as well, and as I mentioned in the opening, I served on the Open Space Committee when I was councilman in Mountain Lakes. But the story of Morris County's open space goes actually back to nineteen ninety-one, when the freeholders then realized that it really required a balance between economic growth and natural resource protection. The community planning required that. So it goes all the way back to nineteen ninety-two, and I've got to credit the voters. They resoundingly endorsed and embraced an open-space tax. What we have been doing since then is expanding the program. So we've got now a historic preservation program. We have a flood mitigation program that was born out of Irene. That was a trend-setting program in the state of New Jersey. That's been very successful, and I think we could actually see when Ida hit, the impact from the floods was less because of the eighty-two sites that we've been able to purchase with that very innovative program. We have farmland preservation as well, all part of that.
Thank you. Mr. McCourt?
Our open spaces are some of our treasures. We have a lot of treasures in Morris County, but our open spaces are really what make us a beautiful place to live. Obviously, our county commissioners should do as much as possible to sustain and grow our open-space program. We should do everything that we can to provide the residents of Morris County with places to go, trails to hike and bike. I would love to see some movement on the Paquonic Rail Trail Program. I know that's been stagnant for a little while. I'd love to maybe hear the commissioners say what's going on with that tonight. Expand that into other unused rail lines, build parks around them. But also, we should invest more in our county parks. Our county commissioners have talked about lifting up our county parks when in fact, the allocation in the budget has been the same since two thousand and nine. And, and we are, we are in the process of disbanding the Morris County Park Police for no reason other than to give someone more power.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Smith, you have the last answer on this, and then I have one rebuttal before.
You know, just kind of briefly, obviously during the COVID, the need for a place to recreate became so evident, people needed to get out of their homes and go somewhere. And I'm so proud that here in Morris County, we have that, we have the trails programs. And our commitment is to continue the open space and to provide a stewardship so that we can grow and enhance it. And through the American Recovery Funds, we will also be enhancing, you know, touchless bathrooms and faucets and things like that. So we are investing in it, and we are managing it. And we look to, as Mr. Crickus said, he was a, come up with the trail program. We are always looking to innovate. Thank you.
Thank you. And as for a thirty-second rebuttal, Mr. Crickus?
Yes, so I wanted to also add to what Commissioner Shaw talked about with our historic preservation. Recently, I mean, we have a real jewel in Acorn Hall, which is near Washington's headquarters. And recently, we attended the unveiling of Saint Cecilia's glass piece of art that used to be at church, Assumption Church in Morristown. And it was just stunning to see, and Morris Historic Funds helped pay for some of that and preserve that piece of art history.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I just want to say that I think one of our, you know, roles when we're elected as new commissioners to bring issues to light, you know, that we haven't been hearing about but are very important. I heard the native I heard the native plants talked about as far as the stewardship program. But a part of that is invasive species as well. You know, our, our tree canopies are hurting and need to be increased around the county for the sake of our environment. You know, I think we need a regional approach with all of these issues. You know, we have to stop kind of treating them as they're in silos around and do the best for, for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just, something else that we do in our chair of the Insurance Commission, and we had the invasion of the Emerald Dash Bore invading our ash trees. And, you know, it's unfortunate to have to take trees down. But once again, we had to be proactive and protect the citizens of Morris County from any harm coming from these trees coming down once the bore gets in them. So we have been proactively working and taking those trees down. And we will deal with invasive species as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Going to move on to the next question then, which is beyond providing dispatch services for police and fire, can the county take on a larger role as a provider of shared services to municipalities? And we're going to start with Mr. Crickus?
Yes, thank you. So we have started, and Commissioner Shaw referenced that earlier, the program of providing ambulance service to towns to fill in the gaps. You know, this is something that I, I, I see personally with my wife being on a first aid squad. And we accelerated that program when COVID was starting because we could see that there was going to be an increased need. And in addition to that, the county was able to bring in to play capabilities such as disinfecting units, you know, light units that could be put, could put in ambulances to disinfect the ambulance after having transported a patient. So that's definitely one area that we took, that we were able to take a look at and to expand and fill in the gaps, you know, to help towns out. We also have Health Department where we have shared services. I believe we're providing that for nine towns. So we're always looking for ways. And by the way, towns also do share services too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, you know, it's, it's not just dispatch. There's a lot more that we do. And Mr. Crickus alluded to the health officer. Actually, Denver was the first one, then instead of having their own dedicated health officer, utilize the county and save Denver residents a lot of money. There's crime scene investigation that goes through the sheriff's office. There's the police dogs, there's ballistics. All of that is so that the individual police departments don't have to have their own people on staff and don't have to wait for somebody to come up from Trenton. You know, doing ballistics can take days and you need something quicker on whether it be ballistics or drug identification. So we are doing shared services and we continue to do it. And our Sheriff Jim Gannon is always coming up with innovative ways that we can help our communities. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Oliver?
Well, the short answer is yes, you know, we need to increase these shared services, especially when it comes to emergency response. You know, I've heard, you know, horror stories of, of towns not being able to respond to the next, you know, town over with their emergency vehicles because there was not, you know, an agreement in place. So, you know, I appreciate what, what has been done so far and what's been discussed. And I think that we can do even more of it in the future.
Thank you. Mr. McCourt?
The county should certainly be willing to step in wherever the municipalities need them to. If there is a service that the municipalities en masse say, we want the county to do this, we believe the county could do it better, then we should. We should be willing to step up and lead where they ask us to. Because ultimately, there are 39 municipalities with 39 different sets of problems, but one that unites them all, and that is rising costs. And any way that the county can step in and help municipalities lessen the burden on their taxpayers because of rising costs, we should do. I'm very disappointed that Morris County has left a $50,000 grant from the state of New Jersey to have a shared services coordinator on the table. Why is there not someone sitting in Morristown every day answering phone calls from municipalities in seek of ways to share services? That's just one of many reasons why we need to increase, we need to increase our focus on that effort so that our municipalities can govern better and ultimately don't have to burden their citizens as much.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shaw on this question?
Yes. Well, first of all, myself and my two running mates, we all serve on a local level. So we understand that's where the rubber meets the road, what the local officials are looking for. And they can, and they will, and they do reach out to us when they're looking for some help from the county. And actually, we get more of those calls than we get from, from constituents. Get a lot of, you know, calls from municipal officials. So it's helpful to have that experience. But some other areas, I won't repeat what was already mentioned, but we have some co-op purchasing. We have the medical examiner's office, weights and measures. The Health Department was mentioned. Our Improvement Authority, there's a, a shared service where our municipalities can take the AAA bond rating of the county and put that to work and save their taxpayers' money when they're doing a capital project. Our, our Mobile Command Center, the sheriff's office has. There's actually over our DPWR, there's, there's sign boards and traffic control items that can be signed out by a county, whenever, by municipality, whenever they need it.
Thank you. And for a 30 second rebuttal, Mr. Crickus?
Yes, so thank you. And Commissioner Shaw, I just mentioned the refinancing through the Improvement Authority. We just this year refinanced county bonds and saved 1.5 million dollars. And that's because of our AAA rating that the rating agencies say is even better risk than the United States. We also did another refinancing and saved Rockaway Borough $250,000 and Chester Borough $138,000. In addition, our county staff has worked hard on grants. And recently, they were able to get a million dollar grant related to COVID response.
Thank you. Now, two more candidates raised their hand, but I didn't see who went first. So I'm going to call on Mr. McCourt first and go ahead for 30 seconds.
What I heard a lot in, in Commissioner Shaw's response is what we've done, not what more we can do. It is great, all of those things you listed. But I did not hear one thing from any of the three commissioners about what they would like to do more. And something that was referred to earlier, the ambulance service that roams the county, that's about all it does is roam the county. Because there are a lot of people that don't take advantage of it due to existing contracts that they have or simply not needing it due to their own ability to serve their constituents.
Mrs. Smith and then Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and you know, just quickly on the ambulance service. It, the dispatch looks at which ambulance is closest so that the response rate to the resident and, and their health needs are reacted to quickly. There's also a shared services department that the governor set up. And actually, one of Morris County's residents is one of the czars of that shared services, and that's Nick Platt. So Nick has been going around to the municipalities and talking about other types of shared services that the municipalities can get together and do themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm offended that ambulance just roams around the county. Those ambulances save lives.
They were your words, Commissioner.
And we also have an ambulance bus that was the first vehicle to arrive at that awful tragedy on Route 80 when that bus cut across the highway. And county having that, which I forget how many people it can hold, is credited with definitely saving at least one additional life with that response that they were able to make.
Thank you. Okay, and you're only allowed one rebuttal. So, okay, let's move on to the next question. And that question will be, we hear a lot about infrastructure. What is the county doing to invest in infrastructure such as roads and bridges? And the first person this time will be Mrs. Smith.
I was hoping to call on Mr. Shaw, he's Chair of the Capital Budget Committee. Obviously, you know, years ago, before, right before I got on the board, we weren't maintaining our infrastructure the way we needed to. We have roughly about 287 miles of roads in Morris County that are county roads. And the project now is, in order to stay on top of that, because those are heavily trafficked roads, we're doing 10% of those roads, trying to do 30 miles of roads every year because there's a certain life on those roads and we want to make certain that that's kept. We also have over a thousand bridges and culverts. We are maintaining that. We have aggressive programs to ensure that the county roads, bridges are in good shape and the railroads and et cetera. So I'll let the, Mr. Shaw talk a little more about that. I'm sure he will.
Okay, Mr. McCourt?
I saw Ms. Smith, she started to say 287,000. I think sometimes it feels like there are that many county roads in the county. No, listen, I think that, you know, generally speaking, the amount of money has spent on roads and bridges has been flat. I would like to see us maybe bump up that, that amount of, of mileage that we do each year. That is something that we can do through budget reprioritization. The faster, obviously, that we repair these roads, the, the, the less of a lag between, you know, repairing some that end up really bad. Obviously, you know, you never know how one stretch is going to end up, traffic ebbs and flows. But I would love to actually also see the county really do more to address the problem areas in the county as far as roads are concerned, the dangerous roads, possibly a task force that, that investigates all of these really dangerous roads that need work and might cost more to fix, but simply get pushed to the back burner because you want to pave more.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
So actually, we do know what roads need to be paved and the condition of them. We actually have a vehicle that does a radar scan of the road surface. The reason why we don't do more than the 10% is because the wearing surface on a typical road is 10 years. So that's the logic behind doing that. Makes no sense to repair a road when the wearing surface hasn't been, you know, reached its end of life or near its end of life or is unsafe. So we know the condition of our roads and we have a plan in place. You can go to the engineering department and they can tell you, you can look it up online, actually, and it'll tell you what, what roads are scheduled to be resurfaced. And obviously, when that work is done, other work is done as well in concert with the municipality as far as curbing and drainage is concerned. And actually, we finished a, a large guardrail program and signage program to increase. So it's not, you know, it's not just about paving. And of course, the bridges and culverts are important as well.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Well, protecting our infrastructure is vital. You know, we have a large county and area and increasingly large and population is, you know, people move in. So this is a very important area. Some of the things that I'd like to see are, you know, pedestrian safety and, and bicycle paths and, you know, safety for the folks that are navigating these roads and bridges. It's very important. I think one of the things I've been hearing across our campaign is that we need to really educate people on what the commissioners do, what they're responsible for. And certainly, this is an important one. So we want to expand that educational opportunity as well for, you know, what is being done and what can be done in the future.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Crickus on this question?
Yes, thank you. So on the roads, we doubled the amount of roads that we are repaving. As Commissioner Shaw says, we really are at a good pace. When we did that, we also hired another engineer for our Public Works Department in order to complete all the plans. Our bridges, our roads and bridges are among the best shape in the state of New Jersey. And actually, I was talking to someone who compete, you know, bikes a lot, does the competitions and was complimenting us on the shape of our roads because it really helps biking and not hitting a bunch of ruts and broken pavement. Our other infrastructure investment is in our education. We have consistently maximized the Chapter 12 funding, that's funding for County College and for Moore School of Technology. Not all counties do that. We have, so that we have had some $24 million invested at County College of Morris, Advanced Engineering Building, the Yaw Music and Technology Building, the DeCros Media Center, in addition to now looking at the Vo-Tec expansion. So those have been two primary areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a 30 second rebuttal for Mr. McCourt?
I just want to clarify because I think Mr. Shaw was confused by my early response. I was talking about the dangerous roads, not the unpaved roads or the roads that need to be repaved. I'm talking specifically about South Morris in Dover that is killing people because it is, it is a sharp curve, a blind curve that needs serious work. That's a county road that the county has failed to address. Perhaps we need to have a group that sits down and looks at all of those kinds of roads and addresses those problems in addition to getting the roads paved.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to the next question. I think we're probably going to have about three or four more questions at the most. So let's move on. Is there any specific department or agency that you consider particularly in need of attention? And if so, why? And we're going to start this one with Mrs. Smith?
I would say overall, our employees and our departments do an excellent job. The surrogates department just modernized, for example, under surrogate Heather Darling to get things available to people online. Those type of things of, of modernizing are things that need, have been done and are being done. But our employees have really done an excellent job. And they come to us with ideas also. We, we reach out to them as Chair of the Budget Committee. We meet with all the department heads. We talk to them about what their needs are. And that's a proactive thing that does, goes on throughout the year. So a specific department? No, I can only point to some success stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCourt?
I would say that answer is emblematic of the problem that we have in Morris County, that the idea that we don't need to do anything better or different. I mentioned it before, OEM funding has gone up 56% since 2015. Human services spending has only gone up 20%. The problems that the Department of Human Services focuses on have been exacerbated by the pandemic. We have more families that are in poverty. We have more families that are Alice households, asset limited, income, income constrained, but employed. They need the county to step up and help them. We need to do more to address homelessness. We need to do more to address food insecurity. You know, the county received funds in the CARES Act that was supposed to go towards homeless shelters, but for some reason, we had to spend $600,000 on legal fees. This was not new funding. This was grant funding that the county gets every year. It was just rolled into the CARES Act's tranche of funding. But for some reason, we had to spend $600,000 on legal fees to figure out how to spend that. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Crickus?
Yes, thank you. I think the real challenge is post-COVID. You know, as Director Shaw says, Morris County is a great place to work, live and play. We may add to that, work, work from home, live and play. And so how is the workplace going to change? That includes the county workplace going to change. We, as part of the ARPA funds, are investing in the ability to video conference in our conference rooms and in our meetings so that if we need to talk to someone, an engineer, say, in Edison, they don't have to travel to the county and we can save on that time. So how is the workforce going to change as far as doing its work, you know, with the work from home experience that we've had? I think that's going to be one of the main challenges going forward. I'd also mention that Morris County delivery of social services leads the state in processing, for example, SNAP and Medicaid applications. So we're, we're on top of those programs and getting, those are funded by the federal government, but we lead in, in processing the applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Oliver?
Well, I think every, every department should certainly be looked at. But, you know, I want to echo, you know, what TC said about, you know, human services and what, what I said before about the vulnerable and the marginalized, especially in our county with food insecurity, especially among the seniors. You know, I haven't, I haven't really heard that, you know, here so far. We're having increasingly, you know, needy populations that we need to, you know, address and the disparity with different, you know, demographics as well. And, you know, with what Commissioner Crickus just said, I think one of the encouraging things that I'm seeing is, you know, increased amount of, you know, coworking spaces in the county. You know, we have, we do have a new reality here. You know, we have some, some interest in the high tech industry coming to some of our towns. And I think You know, we have some, some interest in the high-tech industry coming to some of our towns and I think, you know, these are things that will get people to move here and stay here. We need to invest in them.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shaw on this question?
Yeah, so since Health and Human Services has been focused on, I just want to address a couple of things that people might not be aware of. So it's, it's not just about the dollars. And we take a very unique approach in Morris County. We partner with our not-for-profits. I was just at probably now my third groundbreaking with Habitat. As most people know, I'm in the home building business. Housing is near and dear to my heart. And I've worked closely with, actually worked for Habitat before. So they just had a groundbreaking in Randolph, $569,000. Went to that program from our home funding through Morris County. And actually, over the years, it's been $2.45 million in that funding. We also provide space for these people to operate. We actually provide county space to 21 different agencies across the spectrum, Homeless Solutions, New Jersey Ed, the Veterans Administration. Head Start, we're actually having a dedication tomorrow. We're doubling the size of that program. So we are investing in Health and Human Services. It's not just dollars, it's resources and manpower and buildings.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Mr. Krkis and Mrs. Smith, a quick 30-second rebuttal and coming close to the end here. So Mr. Krkis first?
Sure, very quickly, I wanted to point out that during the pandemic, we continue to deliver our meals to seniors. Now, it had to be done differently, you know, in order to protect both those in Human Services delivering the meals and for those receiving them. But we deliver some 357,000 meals to 2,000 seniors. And we also have our MAPS program to provide trips, some 47,000 trips to those in need. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I wanted to also mention, I'm surprised Mr. Krkis didn't, is that we've, and he's a veteran, is that we've expanded the veteran services to provide more aid to our veterans. We also have housing, we have a number of programs. And by the way, in Dover, they just opened up one Thompson Avenue, which is a public-private partnership of 70 units for low income. And half of those units are prioritized to the veterans or military service personnel. They get the first, first stop at that. So we are doing a lot of it.
Thank you. And, and I do want to thank you for your support of the veterans, especially being an Afghanistan veteran myself. I have my Morris County Veterans IT Card, you know, which I proudly have. And, you know, I do want to thank you for that very much. I would also encourage us to support and doing our part on the county level to support a vet center in Morris County or Northwest New Jersey. Now, much of this, of course, comes from the VA and the federal level. But I feel like on the county level, we can do our part, you know, as, as advocates to support veterans who are desperately in need, especially the ones that go through PTSD and, and sexual trauma. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCourt?
I want to, I want to thank Commissioner Smith for mentioning one Thompson. That is, that is a project that I was on the planning board to see through. It's, it's a beautiful project. The town did a great job with that. But, you know, on that issue of housing, one thing that I would love to see the county do more in is, is the area of affordable housing. Municipalities only build as much as they are required to by law. And they can't get developers to put more in because they simply, there's no financial benefit for them to do that. So I would love to see the county step in, in the municipalities where they want more and help.
Thank you. Okay, we're kind of running out of time. There's great questions here. I think as the last question, I'm going to ask one that's kind of all encompassing. And that is, for the final question, what do you consider the most important challenges facing Morris County? And what personal and professional experiences have prepared you for addressing these challenges? And we will start with Mr. McCourt.
I think the biggest challenge facing Morris County in the decades ahead is an identity crisis. Morris County does not do enough to attract new businesses to Morris County, to attract new jobs to Morris County, to give the youth of Morris County a reason to stay here. We have the Economic Development Corporation, which is a largely defunct group that was in charge of going after businesses and trying to attract them. That is no longer being done. We would like to see an actual Department of Economic Development keep that money in-house and have a person whose sole job and responsibility it is to put Morris County on the map, to attract new businesses and jobs to Morris County and to build that commercial tax base that we need to see grow in order to lessen future tax increases, not just by the county, but at the municipal level. But if we're going to put Morris County on the map, we've got to at least take the map out of the glove box, which right now we're not doing.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Personally, I think that the most important thing, that challenge we have is the COVID recovery of helping all of our residents and our businesses and nonprofits as well to recover from this and really helping them. And I think we've, we've done a lot already, but there's so much more to do. You know, giving aid to the small business. My husband's a small business owner, so you want to talk about personal and knowing how his business was impacted and what could he do? And, you know, maybe we could survive better than the guy that has the dry cleaners because with the dry cleaners now, the guy used to go to work and he'd bring his five shirts in at the end of the week and said, I need them for next week. Well, the dry cleaners are suffering. So really trying to help that, that's the biggest challenge. And we will recover and we will come out of this stronger than before.
Thank you. Mr. Krkis?
Yes, I would have to agree with Commissioner Smith that the challenge we have, the most important one, is coming out of COVID, the recovery from COVID. And we have, every month, for about the past three months, at our meetings, we have had a American Recovery Program update detailing where the dollars are going. And as I mentioned earlier, the Small Business Grant Program will be rolled out in November. So we are focused on the recovery as part of the Strategic Planning Task Force, as part of Morse Recovery Task Force, and we talk to businesses about what they're looking for. So we're looking forward to getting those grants out there. And finally, I would mention that we've increased funding to our economic development area by 43%, including a new $150,000 social media program that we received an update on about a month ago. So we're moving forward in all these areas.
Thank you. And next would be Mr. Oliver?
So the challenges that we face have revealed a lot of the inequities that have already existed. So it's important that we have new eyes, that we have new, bold, creative ideas. And you will have that with us as a stronger Morris team. We have a robust plan for the three issues we're focusing on, the economy, the education and the environment. You know, much of which we discussed tonight, as far as, you know, my experience, you know, I've, I've served all over the country and all over the world and I've seen different ways of doing things. And I look forward to bringing those ideas here. You know, we have a team of, of creative, creative public servants. And so I'm, I'm excited about our opportunity of bringing these ideas to the forefront.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Shaw on this most important?
Yes, yeah. Well, so I have to agree with my, my running mates, obviously navigating out of this pandemic. And, and actually, it sounds a little counterintuitive, but responsibly investing the $95 million in ARPA funds, and we're doing that. And actually, the public, we discuss it at public meetings and there's actually a portal on the website. You can see where every dollar of that is going. I think keeping our seniors and youth here in Morris County is crucial. And we're doing that by investing in education and supporting our regional employers. And the folks coming out of CCM are coming out with skills that are relevant and in demand and tied closely with what's needed in Morris County. Planning and preservation actually works in conjunction with the chamber. They provide, there's a little spreadsheet, basically a brochure in every community. It's free to the communities. It's a nice color brochure. It gives you all the demographics. It gives you an idea of the couldn't finish her.
Okay, thank you all. I just want to let you know that some of the other questions were around county parks, public transportation, how citizens can be involved with the county commissioners and know what the county commissioner's role is. So as you go forward in your campaign, you may want to address some of those questions with your, with your fellow citizens. Right now, we're going to move on to the final portion of the program, which is the closing statements for each candidate. And Mrs. Smith, I believe you are, you drew the straw for the first closing statement. This is a two-minute statement.
Thank you. Once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce for co-hosting this debate. The voters have been given the opportunity to hear our message, make informed decisions. I would like to emphasize that as elected officials, we put people before politics and focus on getting results. The team of Smith, Krkis and Shaw has the experience to govern, providing compassionate, decisive leadership to ensure that Morris County is the place to live, work, play and raise a family. We are the stewards of your taxpayer funds and invest them through improving our roads and bridges, expanding historic and open space preservation, along with a new trail program for our residents, keeping us safe with investments in our police and public safety programs and much more. We do all this while delivering two years of zero tax increase and, as you have heard, forecasting no tax increase next year, maintaining our AAA bond rating, which provides for bonding at the lowest cost, expanding our education opportunities with investments in CCM and VOTEC. Further, we have and continue to lead through the pandemic by providing PPE to frontline workers, easy access COVID testing at the CCM campus, providing vaccinations at the Mega Center in Rockaway in the old Sears complex, and attaining the highest vaccination rate for our most at-risk seniors, the highest in the state. While I was director, establishing the Strategic Planning Action Committee to address the changing needs of the county being faced by the pandemic, an action which was praised by the ratings agencies. We have the experience and the know-how to ensure that residents and businesses recover from COVID epidemic and enable them to remain and prosper in Morris County. I respectfully ask that you provide us with the opportunity to continue serving you and ask for you to vote for Deborah Smith, John Krkis and Stephen Shaw for Morris County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Well, once again, I want to thank the League, the Chamber and the members of the public that's tuned in tonight. I think we're on the map because Forbes, US News and many media outlets consistently rank our corner in New Jersey among the top places in the nation to work, live and raise a family. Morris County is annually praised as one of the healthiest locales in the United States. Without question, this county is simply the best place possible for growing families, young professionals, business owners and entrepreneurs. That didn't happen by chance. It was by thoughtful design through decades of strong leadership or maintaining our AAA bond rating and diligently stabilizing the taxes has been a priority, along with supporting the industries that drive our economic future. We're one of New Jersey's most commercially vibrant regions, home to 33 Fortune 500 businesses, successful companies, leading the nation in research and development, finance, health services, insurance, technology and pharmaceuticals. And that dovetails well with our top-ranked School of Technology and the County College of Morris. We've opened a state-of-the-art advanced manufacturing and engineering center to provide our highly-trained workforce with the exact skills demanded by our local industries. The families who call Morris County home enjoy a high quality of life because of the long-term investments we have made in such treasures as our number one park system, trails and open space. Along with dozens of museums, galleries, musical venues and theaters all near our inviting downtown areas. With this election, the voters have a choice. Respectfully ask you to choose the proven leadership of Smith, Krkis and Shaw, a team that continues to lead through a pandemic with best-in-state response, testing, vaccination, a team that will keep Morris County a great place to live, work and play. And you know, you don't have to take my word for it. You can ask our governor. When he visited Morris County at the opening of our vaccine mega center, he said, and I quote, "Morris County runs like a top." Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Oliver?
It was a joy and an honor to participate in tonight's debate. And I again want to thank our hosts and our candidates and all of our viewers and participants as well. You know, our county motto, which is on our county flag, is tandem visitor, which is Latin for "last it is conquered." So what we've heard tonight are visions for conquering the problems that Morris County is facing. You know, you've heard our opponents and you've heard ours. And it's important that we finally meet head-on the struggle for the future of Morris County. There's been one-party rule in this county for generations. It's vital that we bring new ideas to the table. It's time that we have a fresh, bold, dynamic approach to the issues that face our county. We need a county government that's fully responsible and that's fully responsive, one that has a regional approach that facilitates communication among the municipalities. Morris County is growing with new residents and new perspectives. We need the county government to catch up to that. We need a bold, forward-looking master plan. We need a plan for transportation and infrastructure. We need a plan for supporting the economy and education. We need a plan to expand our solar program and have an all-hybrid county fleet to fully support CCM. But overall, we need a plan. We should be taking the positive ideas and initiatives on the municipal level and bringing that to bear to county government. The programs will pay dividends because they're about people's lives. We can be fiscally responsible, socially inclusive and innovative. That's what our residents are hungry for. We're at a decision point in our county and a choice could not be clearer. A vote for a stronger Morris is one that will help lead Morris County into a bright future for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krkis?
Thank you. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce for holding tonight's debate. All the, and I want to thank all the candidates who participated. And I want to especially thank you, who took your time to be with us here tonight. Tonight, you heard many reasons why Morris County is the best-run county in New Jersey by far. Our county property taxes are the lowest in northern New Jersey as residents in neighboring counties pay 76% or nearly $1,000 more than Morris County residents. And we will not increase county property taxes in 2022 for the third year in a row. We have some of the safest towns in the state. And we support Sheriff Gannon and his officers and creative programs such as Hope One and Navigating Hope. County College and Morris VOTEC are not only the leading educational institutions in New Jersey, they are nationally recognized. And we will work with both institutions to expand VOTEC with a new building on the CCM campus so 500 additional students can receive the training for highly-skilled careers meeting the needs of Morris County businesses. We have the largest county park system and some 26,000 acres of preserved land. And now, in addition to providing expanded access with our trail program, we will look to add a stewardship program for sound environmental management. County Commissioners Deb Smith, Stephen Shaw and I, John Krkis respectfully ask for your vote by mail, by early voting or at the polls on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. McCourt?
It was a pleasure to participate in tonight's debate. And I want to again thank the League and the Morris County Chamber of Commerce for hosting. Also, thank you to Susan for enabling a very substantive conversation that Morris County voters deserved. And of course, I want to thank Commissioner Smith, Krkis and Shaw for agreeing to participate. Though we might disagree on a lot, I have an immense amount of respect for you and your nearly 60 years of political service to the county. But what you've heard tonight are two clear visions for Morris County, one grounded in the past and one grounded in the future. One that accepts the changing faces in our communities, that knows the problems we're going to face in the 2020s and how to address them, and one that's still stuck in the last century. My running mates and I have made education a core tenet of our platform. And when you go to vote on November 2nd, we want you to consider these three inconvenient truths. The County College of Morris is falling apart under failed leadership. And the county commissioners are doing nothing to help. Why? Year after year, VOTEC requests for more general appropriations fall on deaf ears. Why? The Morris County Republican Party is actively trying to destabilize our boards of education, but we hear nothing from our opponents. Why? The truth is that our opponents don't really care about education. They talk about it in election years, but they do care about politics, the lens through which they view just about every decision they make. My husband is a career educator. This isn't political for me. It's personal, just like it is for every single man, woman and child that calls Morris County home. When I'm elected, Morris County will finally have a leader that puts people before politics, a leader that truly prioritizes people and not politics. a leader that truly prioritizes people and not politics. Morris County's best days are ahead of her. And tonight, you've heard how we'll get there. On November 2nd, it would be an honor to have your vote, a vote for a stronger Morris.
Thank you. Okay, in closing, I just want to say that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and never supports or opposes a political candidate or party. And as was mentioned, you have multiple ways to vote this year, including early in-person voting at various places around your county until Sunday, October 31st. From now until then, the hours up until Saturday are 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And on Sunday, October 31st, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I'm sure at your county website or at the New Jersey Votes website, you can locate your closest place to vote. I don't live in the county, which is why I was allowed to do this tonight. Okay. You can also vote by mail, as somebody mentioned. And the deadline to apply by mail is over, but you can go to your county clerk's office by 3:00 PM on Monday, November 1st and get a vote by mail ballot in person. And you can then drop that in, you know, give it to the county clerk or drop it in a vote by mail Dropbox or put it in the mail. And of course, you can vote in person on Tuesday, November 2nd from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This program, as was mentioned earlier, will be available on the New Jersey League website and on votefor11.org website, where you can also find out lots of information about the candidates and the issues up and down the ballot. And as well as the Marstown Area League of Women Voters YouTube channel, which was, this was live streamed on. I want to thank you, the candidates and the audience for your participation. And I will say good night.